On the public hearing.
Okay.
I'm gonna open up the public hearing at 7:01. The purpose of the public hearing is to hear public comments on the real estate excise tax. This is an annual adjustment to the property, specifically the excise tax for the real estate sales. The state allows for a maximum of 1%, which traditionally we in just about every municipality in the state takes advantage of. So, any comments with regard to the real estate excise tax? If we have no comments, then I will close the public hearing at 7:02. Check box.
I think that's our record.
So, by the way, guys, that is due on November 30th. It's, you either do it or you don't, and you can't go back and recover it. So if you miss a cycle, that 1% has gone forever. And I think it's projected for, in our case, that that is going to raise a whopping $569 for this, for the city, assuming we have a property sale. This is only on, only properties, so. Okay. I will open a regular council meeting at 7:02. And roll call. We have Stephen, Creighton, and David here. Gavin contacted me. He is less than 100%, so he decided not to share whatever ails him, so he will be missing three.
Not on file.
No, I, I, as an offer, I don't think he's feeling, I don't think he's feeling it.
I didn't agree with that.
And Chris is not in attendance. Okay, would like to have you guys visitors at this time?
Tim.
Hi, Tim. Lucas Becker. Hi, Lucas. Steve Harman. Steve Harman. Is that H-A-R-M-A-N? M-A-N?
Denise Halli.
Thank you, Denise. All right, may...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I feel like we nailed it that time.
Yeah.
That was better.
That was better. As is customary, we try to open the floor for public comments, if anybody has any at the beginning of our meeting.
Not yet.
Okay. For the council, any items on our consent agenda that you want to have removed for this meeting?
None here.
I just have some questions about the check register, a few items.
Okay, you want to pull that out?
Sure.
Okay. Anything else?
Right now, you're just talking about removing from the consent agenda.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, additions to the agenda?
Are you gonna bring up the library keys?
I was going to, yeah.
Okay. And then I want to talk briefly about the copier machines. Because that'll be a precursor to what I'm assuming will be a vote at some point. I would suggest next meeting to be able to break that contract.
Exactly.
Whenever it becomes appropriate.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to talk briefly about a couple of potholes.
There. Is the season?
And an update on the she shed on city property. I don't know what else to call it.
What's that up there? Okay.
It's up here on the corner. It's a storage building, that thing.
Your voice?
I, no, I heard, I won't even say my name.
No, I mean your voice.
I'm sick too. I'm over it.
I have a schedule, but he is waiting so we can go into our executive session to discuss potential...
I assume that he's here to talk to us. Let's do him, so he can go home.
Okay, Stephen, how much time do you need?
You know, I'm here mostly to listen and learn a little bit. David has a real passion for the community and asked me to kind of take a look at what they were doing with the cemetery fund. I do, I consider a lot of work with endowments and foundations, so I took a look and, to be honest, I had some questions.
Okay.
You know, and I'm not sure where you guys are at on it, and how you feel about it currently, and if you're, you know, looking to do anything with it, so.
Okay.
I'll take as much time as you.
Go ahead.
I think so. I mean, I think Creighton's right, that we don't want to keep anyone. It's long drives and slick roads are dear, and so, better get home.
Okay, we'll, we'll change that up. Okay, then we will move, we will switch, and Stephen, you're up. You have some comments, questions?
It's really gonna be more starting with questions in that, is there a vision for what you guys are trying to do with the cemetery and the endowment and the unit and all the different categories that that's fallen into?
For vision, of you guys, I mean, as mayor, I know what I wanted to do, and I want it to grow just enough to pay for all the overhead expenses that it takes to manage a cemetery.
Some communities get very much into their cemeteries, wanting to be a real source of pride for the community. You know, they want to improve it and expand it, and then if endowment's treated right to create a source of funding, so it doesn't create a city coffers as much, and that's usually driven by somebody having the vision and feeling, so. When I was looking over what you have, first question is, what category is it? 501(c)(3), (c)(13), city managed?
City managed.
City managed, yeah. City owned, city managed. Ironically, the cemetery is outside the city limits, but it is city owned and city managed.
So the city managed, it shows up with a, you file a 990 report on it, the tax reports are filed, which usually for...
Cassie, do we file any federal forms?
I have none, there hasn't been anything pre, pre-dating on that.
I've never seen one.
And that was just kind of my concern, is what we do is try to help organizations run things that meet their fiduciary duty. You know, so just find out how currently is, and mind you, this isn't a burden we put on you. If we understand it, and you guys want to make sure you're up to par on all those issues, we help you get there. You know, just little things like, I didn't see an investment policy statement, does that exist anywhere that anybody knows of?
No. No.
We pretty much follow, as far as the endowment's concerned, we pretty much follow the, our ordinance, which is very similar to the state RCW.
I did get a chance to read three or five ordinance on it, which, you know, I found interesting, and just, part of it is, it's divided into three different pieces, I think everybody seems to be aware of that, the maintenance, improvements in the endowment, and even in the ordinance, it's like, there's usually an allocation for something that's growth oriented, and we see where it's sitting now, which isn't bad, by the way, no criticism, but it isn't necessarily needing the requirements of what's supposed to be there to, you know, kind of grow it for the future. I get a definite sense of, they want it to be very, very low risk, which is fine, but it's like, you still have to meet that fiduciary duty, are we following the intent of what this is? Is there any other written information about it?
I don't think so.
I've searched and searched, and what I...
We had a person who was very interested in the cemetery, and he, I would say, if the equivalent of tore the city apart, looking for documents that should exist, and...
Stan Roth.
Couldn't find them.
Well, and so, how does a group feel about having our aide, not, not charging you for it, to maybe deal with some of those issues and bring them up to where they're supposed to be, to have those, like an investment policy statement, we'll work with you to write one? You know, so it's like, just to start covering your bases on those. When I get involved in these, a lot of times, I get invited to speak to donors, because a donor, especially if somebody wants to give something significant, is gonna have all these same questions. They're gonna want to know that, hey, if I make this donation, what assures me that my gift is gonna be long lasting and do what I intended? So we try to make sure, yes, we've got all this properly covered, and here's what we're trying to do with it. You know, we see donations for cemetery funds that are, you know, in the millions at times where people get very generous, and it's just, if somebody has that desire to say, yeah, we'd like to maybe have the opportunity to do that, we even work with the donors to help them understand how to give to something. You know, I'm working on one where they're giving away a commercial building into a charity. You know, there's just so many different opportunities that are there to achieve what you said, just to have a fund that will help pay for it, take some of the string off the city's budget, because we get a nice endowment.
Yeah. So when you say that we don't charge you for that, you're making your money somewhere.
Not unless we earn it somewhere. You know, it's like, we go through the work of trying to help you set it up, you know, ultimately, if there's a role for us to play, but we're fiduciaries, if what you're doing is the best thing out there, we have to tell you that, you know, we're legally obligated to do that. You know, so do I see a point where at some point the money should be managed in a different way than it currently is? Yeah, I can see that happening ultimately, and generally, that's where we get paid, but we don't until...
So, with the cons, starting with the concept, I get what you're saying, is that from the fiduciary responsibility of to tell us if we believe we're doing the best thing, do you often find yourself recommending actively managed investment funds? Is that a common investment vehicle for you?
You know, everybody's got a different approach and feel for how they want to manage it. We're an open architecture firm. Our goal is to find out what is the most appropriate way to manage the funds. You know, we don't try to do any of this in a hurry. For me, it's a matter of taking the time to truly explain it, so everybody's on the same page and understands, and can say, yes, that's what we want. You know, open and active, I think we're coming into a period of time where passive is gonna fade and active will take over, we're already starting to see it, this is just a normal cycle of it. So again, it depends on where we're at, what the market outlook currently looks like, but there's no one flat, this is our cookie cutter, we throw it to everybody type of deal.
So if it does get to a point where you guys make your money, what kind of fees generally get involved with that? Like, I, I understand, it sounds like we can go down the road with your ways and just kind of start to set things on a good footing, and at least, by speaking from myself, I don't have a problem paying people for their work. My goal is not here to be like, I'm not gonna give you any money, I'm just trying to understand where, if this does develop, what kind of, because a part of our responsibility in trying to transfer it from where we are right now to where it would go, is to make sure that a lot of what we're doing is making money for the investment fund, and so I think, I just, we need to check our base to understand what kind of fee structure do you guys generally get involved in, that if we do go far enough down that road?
It would be really simple. You know, obviously, we're gonna be 1% or less, and obviously, if something gets larger, it gets to be to the less, but if that makes it an easy number for you to wrap your mind around.
That helps.
Just know that it's gonna be 1% or less, and that's all in, there's no nickel and dime fee, you don't pay something extra for this or something for that, it's what we charge, period.
Yeah, perfect, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
And generally, it's like, I'm a numbers guy, so if we're gonna say, how do we justify that 1%, you know, so we show the things that we do, and then we show the different performance that you could normally expect from that over time. Obviously, everybody knows the investment markets are different every day, but we give you a real sense of, that over every market cycle, if you're coming out 2% or 3% ahead after you pay our fee, that's a win. 2% or 3% better than what you're doing currently.
So you guys only work with endowments, or is there also, can you work with city savings accounts?
Depends on how you have them structured and coded, yes, we can work municipalities. I'm in the private wealth side, which means I work with high net worth investors as well.
Okay.
Good question, so thank you.
Well, we, we have two large pots of money, and it wouldn't be unreasonable that if we found something to be a good direction, for one, it's, should be at least a consideration for the other, I think.
Well, in the short term money, like you guys have it in the Washington state pool right now, I realize that, but when you look at the chart, and David just actually handed this to me, and I see, I know these, these are publicly available, so it's not sure anything's not supposed to, but when you see things like this graph of, you know, it's going down rather quickly, you can see the money they're paying, and with the Fed lowering interest rates probably in December, and maybe two, three, two, three times next year, where do you think that's going? And, you know, you look at this, might be an opportunity to say, hey, we're really happy with this, can we lock this in maybe for a period of time, and still meet all the needs and demands, and stay with safety?
Well, I don't think it's ever really been established what kind of risk profile the city is willing to have with that money. I remember when Dylan Haas was mayor, having conversations, there was an assumption, I, again, I don't think anyone ever established this, but it was just kind of this assumption, it had to always be in the safest thing possible, it could never lose any money, is always what I was hearing. I don't think, I mean, if, if that's gonna be your baseline, I think your return's gonna stink. So I, I think we're gonna have to have a decision of just how much risk profile we're willing to take, because it's not a large enough endowment to play it, to play it too safe. If, we've got a lot of obligations, my, my opinion, we've got a lot of obligations, and we're gonna have to take on some risk if we want to see that actually pay up for us, because, to your point, when we started with this, the LGIP was making nothing relatively. I mean, because the Fed rate was...
With just a savings account.
Right, the Fed rate was terrible, and so we got lucky that for a little while, we could kick this can down the road, because LGIP was producing good, safe money for us, but I think that season is probably going to come to a close, and we're gonna need to do something else.
At least in this cycle, I would agree.
Well, and that's part of it, is we do a lot of education to help people understand, because everybody sits in a board like yours, is, you know, an investment knowledgeable person, so we try to help them understand that through the cycles, that an endowment by its nature is long term. You know, we're not gonna manage it for the next six months, we're gonna manage it for the next 100 years, you know, and so if we want it to grow over that 100 years, like you're saying, we probably need some volatility, and we don't, you know, by our nature, we're risk averse as well. We don't like to invest in things that can go away, you know, things like good quality stocks can go up and down, but they generally don't go away. And by being a fiduciary organization, you have to have an investment policy statement that aligns with what you guys are trying to do, and from what you're telling me, what I'm hearing, that's gonna come back and say, well, if you want to grow this for the future, you're absolutely right, we're gonna need to take a little more risk with it.
Well, like I was saying, I don't think that's even technically a change, because I don't know that that was ever written anywhere. I mean, that might have just been...
A symbol.
The adage.
Yeah.
Or maybe the, the, what the investors, maybe, maybe that's, maybe a time, people who gave, not investors, but the, the people who donated over the years, maybe that was their sentiment that they related, but who knows if they're with us now, and it, you know?
I doubt that most of them even had a comment, one way or the other, they thought they were doing a, a good thing.
Yeah.
And trusted the city to do a good thing.
Yeah.
But we were tied with, we couldn't touch that good thing, and weren't making anything on it.
Yeah.
Part of it's driven by the structure of it, I noticed in the endowment, that the principle is sacred, it cannot be touched, but the earnings are supposed to be paid out to the other funds to help actually with the managed budget, so like, how much does the city need to contribute to running the cemetery, so we know how much from the fountain of the endowment has to be paid out to the maintenance fund?
I don't think you can make us that much better. Just saying.
We should, we should try, but, yeah.
The existing balance, but if by doing this right, and you get more donors involved, and all of a sudden, you got somebody who's a nice chunk. I've worked at the startup of many foundations, you know, I, one of my favorite things is Christian schools, you know, we start a foundation for them, you know, and because of what we were able to grow and do, there's many kids that are getting to go to a Christian school that never would have been, you know, so for me, there's a real joy in seeing the impact that you can make with it, and part of that is just growing the donor base, because you have a great program that's defined, it's understandable, you know, the policies and procedures are all in place.
Okay.
So, if we wanted to go further, what would be our first step? Just...
You know, I just want to see a sense of, yeah, where can we do this? We care about making sure, people seem to not understand, because it's so seldom checked on what the fiduciary duty is on something like this, it's like, so we want to make sure that that's being met. Most fiduciaries don't realize that if you're blatantly not fulfilling that duty, you have a personal responsibility, even to the financial side of it. You know, if you've got the money sitting in a dead checking account for 10 years, and somebody goes, hey, wait a minute, that's, that's not what you're supposed to be doing, they're not likely to get you, but they could come after you, you know, you could be in the mix on that, so we try to make sure that you're making all of those fiduciary duties, you know, that's like job one. So that starts with, okay, what do we really have? I think we figured it's a city-run plan, but the way you're reporting it tells me it's something different, you know, so I'm not sure who wrote it up originally, what it says, like, there's gotta be a charter of some type that established it. Usually, it's more than just a city code.
I think they started it, and they never quite got to the peak, the summit, and it just stuck me right there.
And again, not to make this confusing or anything to it, because we're gonna look into it, and we're happy to find out, here's what you've got, here's the most effective thing it should be, and then what are your obligations as you're in your role? What should you be doing, and what of that can we do for you?
Has he been sent Stan's findings?
Yes.
Including the old original ordinance, and then he also had a sheet of his summation of what he thought he found, and, yeah. Okay, yeah, so, so he saw this?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think part of our company is made funds, institutional financial services, and we have a whole team that is able to take a look at all of this and go with the documents, how we create the ones you're missing.
Yeah, that's it. Yes, I think that's almost all we have, that I've ever seen or even heard alluded to.
Yeah, because we had Stan Roth in here for quite a while, and digging through files and files and boxes, and his determination was, they talked about it, but it never was created, the statement.
And then there was a board, but they didn't last too long, because the council got all up in their business, and so they said, well, if you guys are just gonna try and run this anyway, then we're just gonna disband, and then I think it just fell into the state that it is now.
I think in all honesty, the board that was created took on two different meanings. What, what their intent was, a board to oversee the financial aspects of this, and it turned out that they were just worried about what trees to prune, and flowers, and aesthetics up there, and people just, you know, a couple of years, they started peeling off or quitting, and it just finally, thinking about '96 here, somewhere timeline...
I saw that, David, it's a few decades ago, and it's just like, since that time, has this community grown at all? Not much?
No, not really.
A lot of activity out there?
We, when we ask for donations, we've kind of been stressing that if you want to donate to the cemetery, and this would be a $50 donation, we usually send out, once a year, send out cards and ask for, we try to have them specify it goes to the maintenance fund and not to the endowment, then we actually can use those dollars, we can say, your $50 paid for mowing or whatever.
Sprinkler head.
Sprinkler head, yeah.
I was gonna say.
And, and that is probably some of the reason in the last few years, why the endowment hasn't grown, not only was it not making any money, it wasn't getting any donations in particular.
Part of why we were doing that, though, is because it was, the endowment wasn't being managed well enough to produce anything until it went to the LGIP, so we were in the position, it's like, well, we don't want people putting money in the endowment, because we're never gonna get the money back out of that. So you would be more likely to have people put it into the endowment if it's actually making any money for you.
Even if, when it has grown, we still have not administratively requested to poll taxes, $100 out of it.
No, and it's been used, well, I'm not gonna use that term, because that's not... From what I understand of how it was used decades ago, it was borrowed against, it was viewed as the moneymaker in decades past, and so it's not been treated with its own sanctity.
I noticed it was borrowed at a rate of 1%.
A couple of times, which is...
That would not be called a competitive rate, which it's supposed to have to be.
Yeah, and that is a big, won't happen again, at least not while I sit here.
I'd say demographics has changed, aging population, a lot of the bigger people that can, let's say, afford or be more gratuitous, we're getting, you know...
They're already up there. They call it the great wealth transfer.
You know, we've lost a lot of good old folks, you know, and so, you know, more so than, you know, years in the past, they've always, but it just seems like the trend has been that way, so far as donations and stuff, and getting something set up.
Well, and just looking at the list, you guys are just, you know, but there's never been probably a more important time to look at something like this, because the transfer of wealth is gonna happen over the next 10 years, it's like, nothing we've seen, we're talking trillions of dollars, as people in this country, you know, the aging baby owners are fading away, and the desire for charitable giving, I deal with it every day, and the money flowing in is just unbelievable, people want to make an impact, you know, it's, we see it in our consumer spending, people aren't aware of this, but people are spending more on experiences than goods right now, it's kind of a really unique time that we're seeing this huge, people want to make an impact, they want to leave a legacy, and there's a lot of wealth out there, you know, so having this together, if you're ever gonna do something to just make the awareness of it larger, this is probably a good time to be doing that.
Can we just say, have at it?
Oh, you guys can let me leave, talk behind my back for a while.
Well, no, 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 I, I'm just wondering if, is it, does it have to be an action item, or can we just...
It is an action item on the agenda.
Okay.
This is something you guys can take action.
A motion in a...
What are we actually motioning at this point?
The only thing we're offering at this point is to review everything you have, kind of get the details in place that should be there, you know, and then we would look for our next step, find out a sense of it, and really, the more feedback I can get on, like you've just talked about, you know, what do we mean by risk? How much we willing to take that discussion for you to have alone, or I'm happy to be part of it, you know, that would be the next step, but if it was me sitting in your chair, I'd want to make the fiduciary stuff covered first.
Well, where I'm at with is, I have no problem moving forward. I, I did not hear anything here that was concerning. You answered the questions that I, and the concerns that I did have. I can move forward with it, but I just want to be straightforward with you that we probably need to do at least a little bit of due diligence in talking to some other firms, just, I don't want to, like, I appreciate you came down here. I'm not looking to find a better deal necessarily, but I think if we're all about trying to make sure we're doing our due diligence all across the board, we probably at least need to talk a little bit to some other people. But I'll say, from me to you, I have no concerns with what you did here. You're total, I mean, you're definitely my front runner as far as like, I have no, this isn't, this isn't, yeah, I know, I'm just saying. I'm just saying, it's not, I mean, because I, yeah, once you walk out the door, I'd say it on public meeting with YouTube on anyway, so I might as well just say it here. But, so I'm saying, we can move forward, but I just want, you to know that at least from me, I'm still going to probably push that we at least look a little bit before we move forward. But I think if I was to put money on it, we'll move forward with you guys in the end.
Well, and I would encourage you to do exactly that, you know, and profile the people you're talking to. We're not talking about just being the money manager. We're talking about somebody who has institutional knowledge.
Yeah, and we need help with all of that.
Actually do this.
Yeah.
And you come with a lot of institutional knowledge.
Yeah, so I guess I'll make a motion that we, that we move for, I'm trying to figure out how we actually want to phrase this motion, that we move forward on exploratory, and exploratory analysis and recommendations, like finding out what it is and if they have anything that they recommend that we should set in place now, that that would be the stuff that we would work on in this stretch. It's not an elegant motion, but I don't, I was still afraid.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to move on an exploratory analysis to just put it in four words.
Does that make sense to, does that make sense to you, that motion?
It leaves me, and this is fine, I would expect it to be this way, it leaves me sand. I need to hear back from you before I go to work on anything.
Okay, what more do you need from us to go to work on things?
Well, and it's like, we're saying, let's explore the fiduciary duty, the structure, and that's easy. And yes, we can move forward on that, you know, but if you want to talk to other people first before we do any of that, that's still fine.
You want to change your motion to explore fiduciary responsibility?
Well, I guess, what do you guys think? Do you want to talk to other firms first before we move forward with them? Do you want to just move, I, I, that was just one person. I don't, I don't make the counsels.
I don't know any other people I would talk to.
I do. Finding this level of expertise in this field is not, it's not like our engineering firms where everyone can rebuild a water plant. I mean, they're, it's, it's specialized. I used to have my securities license. I purposely let it go because it takes a lot of energy and a lot of work to keep the education going. It's just like, I got too much going on. I can't, too many masters. So I, I can appreciate probably more than most what it takes to stand in that role. So, and yes, the other people that I know that are, that are financial planners or financial analysts or CFPs, whatever you want to call them, none of them have the institutional knowledge.
So is that you saying that you don't know someone that would be competitive to what we have?
I'm saying we'd have to work really, really hard and probably go way offshore to find somebody with this level of experience. I mean, hate to say, but I think you're standing alone in this area is probably, and I haven't, I don't owe you from Adam, I mean, we've never talked, I haven't hooked you up or anything, but just what you're saying, I have a hard time to find anybody or another firm within 200 miles that knows what they're doing in this area.
And if you guys want to ask around to other people or something like that, too, that's, I'm certainly in no rush on this and happy to.
I guess we're not, in my opinion, right now, it's not going to cost us anything now. And so I, I full, fully support you doing.
The fiduciary.
Yeah, do, and what kind of stuff that we need to get our ducks in a row too.
Right.
And that you said, that's what basically you said that you would help us with.
And that's your motion.
Not ducks in a row.
That was the intent behind my motion is that we can go as far as we go before we actually start hitting funds and paying for things. I would do whatever due diligence I can do within the next month, which I don't even know, I don't know firms off the top, I don't know any competitors to what I've heard, like what you said here.
No, I, me neither.
But I would, I would get whatever research I can do out of the way quickly so that we wouldn't, you know, play games with these guys. But I also don't want to sit on our hands, so if everybody's on the same page of what this is and isn't, let's move forward as far as we can go, is my intent.
Okay.
So what else, what else do you want in our motion to?
The gist, that we can start taking a look and see where we can add some value to it.
Yeah.
Just so you guys know, I have been in the business for 33, 34 years. I spent 30 years with Merrill before making the move to Raymond James, mostly because they had a more rest, more best institutional offering that's much more appropriate to the community that I work in, you know, so I ran the Merrill office probably for the last 20. So I have a few years of experience, just to let you know.
And now you have a nicer office.
Excuse me?
A nicer, newer building.
Where I get to pick all the people that work for me, and it's a great crew.
Okay, well, if he doesn't want any changes to our motion, let's just move forward with it. I guess it sounds like all of us are on the same page, so.
All in favor of moving forward on Stephen's motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I wish I could, people give me credit for elegance, but you know, when you try and make a motion, it doesn't mean.
Lucas, don't, yeah, don't write this with that. Thank you for coming down.
Yes, we appreciate it.
Really appreciate it.
You're going to need his contact.
And thank you, David, for pulling this together. Appreciate that.
I've known Steve for quite a few years and the family has, and it just seemed like a no brainer. I got you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
All right. Move on to our next agenda item then?
Detective session.
Yes.
How long do you want?
I think.
You're welcome to stay if you want.
If you guys are familiar with what you're thinking, I think we could do 10 minutes or 15 minutes. What do you think?
15.
15?
Basically, you want to drive an answer between those two options?
Yes.
Well, I lead your lawyers' talk every day.
Try 10, we can extend. I don't know.
That serves a part. You wanted me to see, I'd probably get it back for you.
It's just going to be bills and approval of utility rate and all that, so.
The exciting part.
It's up to you.
Yeah.
I know you have a long trip back and you've been up since, you know, before the crack of dawn.
Well, it was a pleasure meeting all of you.
Uh, thank you.
That's the way you keep things organized. Realize that.
All right, so we're doing 10 minutes?
Thanks, Steve. We can do 10 minutes, yes.
48.
Okay, we're 39, so. Back at 49?
We were down there before you. I think we have more.
No, it's okay.
We are extending for ten minutes, ending at eight PM.
Break something down to clean up.
I know what I can say.
Proper rickets.
How do you pay from the bank?
I'm saying you're gonna break up your, break your schedule.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, no, there are places in town that are looking to give her a refund.
Moving on.
We lose David?
He went to the restroom.
No. I hear it's lovely this time of year.
Didn't you eat?
No.
I wish I did.
Thank you for saying the French.
I'll survive.
We ate two hours before we usually do. And with no wine, that's what's...
It's terrible.
No one questions them.
No, no one questions us.
Could be anything.
That reminds me, did I amuse?
Are you one of those people where that's been healthy sleep?
No comment.
I used to drink like four or five of them a day.
Beers?
Norm!
That would be a touch of it.
I'm pretty sure by the time the next couple of years are over, I'm gonna have to have a spoon replacement. Okay. We good to go?
Good to go.
Good to go. All right. Next on the agenda is our 2026 water utility rate adjustment. We had a workshop on this. Based on that information, I've come up with a tentative ordinance. Five seventeen should be the next number. Did you get a chance to... I believe that pretty much covers...
Am I missing...
I never saw this.
Oh, I think that's sent out.
Oh, it wasn't? Okay. I apologize, I think I've done that to you guys.
Do you have one more?
I could certainly make one. May I borrow that? I got it.
You better.
I think we need to clean the optics.
Hmm?
Scanner optics need to be cleaned.
Oh, yeah, I told him that I need to get an alcohol wipe and there's gunk on it. Yeah. Okay, I have two concerns. One, I think this needs to have an amendment with an additional section to clarify that there are no gallons included in the base rate. That might be implicit in what's stated there, but considering this town has historically been used to getting gallons included in the base rate, I think it is worth being explicit that everything is just straight, twenty-five cents per hundred cubic feet. That's, that's it.
So can I add that to section two?
Yeah, sure. Okay. Just saying that there are no, there's no water usage included in the base rate.
Or the end of section one, doesn't matter.
And if you really wanna get helpful with it, I would also put in a thing to say that there is no cost progression.
Oh, no tiers?
No, no tiers. That twenty-five cents per hundred cubic foot is the whole thing in its totality. That's point one. Point two, and I know Joe has made this very clear and I do not disagree, that we have met all of our legal obligations in regards to a public hearing in order to pass this tonight. My one concern with how this has been structured in the past is that in no public hearing did we have actual final numbers that we were prepared to vote on for anyone to actually consider and object to. So I don't, I don't know. We've been work, I'm kind of split because on one hand, we've been talking about this for long enough that if a person was really concerned, we should have had someone show up. I don't think when we did have the public hearing about water, I don't think anyone had any comment. We've had workshops that people could show up at, there's been a number of meetings. So the city citizens have not been without opportunity to put their two cents in. But there, I think there is something to be said for having a people have actual final numbers to object to before we do it. So I'll leave it to the other council members whether you wanna vote on this tonight, but I'm not sure that I do. I know that that's probably not what Joe wants to hear because it'd be nice to get this across the finish line and have this done. And whenever we do do it, we can't, and we can't do it, actually change the rates for sixty days afterwards. So the sooner the better. I get all that, but...
Well, we can, it's just considered in poor taste.
Oh, right, it's the garbage that needs or something.
Yeah. It's, well, I think technically you can't adjust the rates so close in the future that what water, people are using today would be affected by the new rate.
Right.
So that's the purpose of sixty days, is just to completely move that far enough in the future that there's no...
So the base rate's going up roughly ten percent.
Mm-hmm. But you know, I saw that there was a Bank of America study that came out this year that said that they see that across the country, there's an average of a seven percent increase in utility rates this year alone. And we haven't increased our rates in a decade. So I mean, I mean, part, the important part of this as far as people's pain, ironically, is the built-in increase. Because the people, the thing that people probably most object to, well, people can object to anything, but the concept of why is it going up so much all of a sudden? Well, because we weren't increasing rates in a smaller way over the longer period of time. So unfortunately, then everyone hits, hits all at once. In order to not do that to people, there's hopefully more manageable increases that we can get used to. In order to not do that to people, there's hopefully more manageable increases that we can get used to over a longer period of time, but when you look at the broader scope of what's going on with utilities across this country, these rate increases per year that we're talking about are not egregious in any way, shape, or form.
So section three, imperperatuity, perpetuity. It's gonna go up three percent, there's no end to that? We can not raise it, but all we're doing is giving us the opportunity to raise it.
Yeah. If we don't do what we should do in reviewing this every year, at least this will automatically keep us in a better spot than just leaving it flatline.
Do we have that spelled, that's gonna be spelled out in the ordinance?
Well, that's... That's section three.
Yeah.
There's any, any part of this at any time in the future can be amended.
Yep.
That's just, that's any ordinance.
Yeah, we've nuked ordinances.
And so in twenty-seven, we decide we just wanna one percent raise, that we're a lot better off and utilities went down. We can, we can amend it for the, a single year.
Negative for two years, therefore we, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's responding to the environment as we see it.
So Councilman Hardy, what was, what was your, why don't you want to vote on this tonight?
Well, I don't know that I'm, I'm just unsure because I, I like the concept of there being one public hearing with final numbers for people to object to. But as I said, at the same time, this has gone on long enough and there's been plenty of opportunities for a very concerned citizen to speak to us, they are not without potential for representation.
And I will say this to your comment. There was the one public hearing and we kind of had our numbers, we weren't on the same page, so people were here looking for, to make comments and quite honestly, we tabled, I tabled it because it was jumbled up.
I kind of like to maybe put a public hearing on the next meeting and call it good then.
So we have to have a public hearing at the next meeting anyway for budget review?
Fine by me.
So...
Yeah, we'll have these guys here. Our faithful ones. I said, I banged that in a good way.
The most regular attendees of our, don't even live in town.
So if we, if we table this till December tenth, gives me time to type out the corrections as you just did.
I would agree with Stephen, I think that we do need to have actual numbers. And this is giving us actual numbers.
December tenth is our next council meeting.
We gonna do this public hearing at seven?
Yeah, same thing.
And I would request that we put it on Facebook and we should post it at the post office and everywhere in...
Door to door?
Well, no, not door to door. I, I, I mean, people should have some...
We could have it on the back of the bill, they get the bill on the first, they'll have an opportunity. So on the tenth of December, we vote on it then?
Yeah.
Or do we have a public hearing and then, unless, I mean, barring anything...
As much work, this is my opinion, my two cents here, as much work as you guys have done on this and we've given opportunities and I see the audience, either they don't, you know, in my opinion, we're just, you know, treading water, but you guys...
I don't think it will practically make any difference. It's just, the problem is all the opportunities that they had before, no one could have sat here and said, okay, is this up or down? The numbers I'm actually gonna pay next, next year, we never had numbers.
Well, let me ask you this. Will it make a difference on our presentation if we have fifty people show up against it?
It's not likely to for me because I know that you can change the base rate, you can change the gallons costs, you can play, keep playing with numbers all day long. I know we need to make up twenty grand one way or another, so my, my mind is set, increases are going to happen, it's just, I guess, a question of whether people...
We've been paying the increases over the past five, two years.
Absorbment, yes.
Yep.
Which is illegal.
And it's, and it's hard numbers, it's not like we're coming up with this to expand our cushion.
No.
These, these are real numbers, everyone, everyone here...
If you guys want to do it tonight, like I said, I can do it tonight too.
How many people you have online right now?
Four. Four.
I do remember a certain council meeting where, when, when the sewer rate was increased.
Occasionally, we get quite a...
It was quite a, quite a drama-filled.
Afterwards?
And it was afterwards because I don't, I think people didn't pay attention on the front side.
So, just clarify, this was advertised on the back of the bill?
No, no, this, this hasn't been on the back of the bill.
The public meeting?
No. Well, we didn't even technically have a public hearing today on that.
The public hearings that we did have were, were advertised in the newspaper, but they were months ago.
And we didn't have them because we had no numbers?
We didn't have numbers, so they really didn't...
Didn't accomplish anything, that's for sure.
Comment, it, you're right, they didn't have numbers to say, I don't care, or absolutely no way, or there was no numbers.
Well, the bottom line is, people are gonna want to know, how much is this gonna cost me, I guess?
And we couldn't answer that until today. It's the first meeting, this is the first official meeting where we could ask, answer that question.
Well, it's spelled out here, it's gonna go up to forty dollars, and what else do they need to know?
Forty dollars for a base rate, twenty-five cents for a hundred cubic feet of water, which is seven hundred and forty-eight point one gallons. And if anyone's listening, the reason why we're looking to change to cubic feet is because we have been informed that the tide of things is that meters that we will be putting in over future years will all probably come with cubic feet readings. They can be changed, but we won't have an incentive to invest the time or the money to do that, so eventually, everything will get read in cubic feet.
And section two, the seven hundred and forty-eight gallons, how does that rate right now? The, the current, what we're under, is five thousand?
The, the current is five thousand included in the base rate, and then after that, it's what? Uh, it's per thousand gallons.
Five cents per thousand.
Five cents per thousand.
So, so the average, and you guys figured out the average home uses how much a month? Did we ever get that?
Three thousand, I would say.
Yeah.
Kind of on the high average. There's some people that blow that way out of the water, but...
I mean, so our, our rough estimates is that like, Creighton and I could see our summertime high peaks double. But it's, they're only gonna be, but this ends up being, because the, the problem is, the thing is this, there's only a very few people in town who use a lot of water. Most people don't have big lawns or they don't water them or whatever else. Even though, even for those of us that do, we, our water usage only ramps up for a few short months, so the vast majority of this whole thing is driven by base rate. We, we did probably what, fifteen, twenty different projections in our workshop? And what we found out is you can, you can increase the, the per gallon usage to kingdom come, and it's hard for it to make any difference. A small difference in the base rate, because everybody pays it every month, does so much more than what you can do with gallons. So this is an effort to balance things that, so that our high usage users will bear more of the burden. But we do still have to do a base rate increase anyways because there's just not enough gallons being used at those peak times to ever offset that if we wanted to.
Yeah. Well, and, and standard budget calculations are your, your day-to-day operations cost is what your base rate is supposed to cover.
All right, I moved table it to next meeting and have a public hearing. And I request that the city do everything that it can to fully advertise this. I mean, not sort of, not talking, not talking about advertising, but locally, let's get all the publicity we can so that everyone, no one has any excuses.
I'll second that.
Okay. I have a first and a second to table this until the December tenth meeting, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to our tax levy increase.
Move to approve.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
The additional... Did you guys need to see it?
Yeah. This boilerplate year over year, right?
Do we have a second to approve?
Yeah, he's second.
Oh, I did not hear that. Thank you.
Didn't you?
Yeah.
Or was it last year?
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion on the real estate excise tax levy?
I'm good.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, fee schedule. We were actually supposed to review this. We reviewed it earlier this year, but we're supposed to do it at the end of the year so that we can have it, a new schedule if need be, being placed by January first. It was also mentioned at the time we were doing that, to discuss the infant grave space fee. And David, that was, uh, that was something that you had mentioned, so I didn't know if you had a...
Well, I don't have those documents, but I think originally, how much we currently, I just wanted to leave it alone. I don't think we needed to raise it.
Okay. I didn't.
The other...
It's almost more of an administrative that we have an opportunity to review it annually.
It's fine by me.
We can review fees at any time, but we are supposed to, as per resolution, do it at this time of year, technically in October.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it, Mr. Murray, that was something that I just thought was near and dear to everybody.
Maybe a discussion for another time, because I know this is getting late enough, but at some point, we should look in, do we have any recourse of who we sell to? Do we have to sell to anyone who will buy?
Yes.
A specific product or...
My, well, my concern is, is spaces fill up in cemeteries.
Oh.
We've had instances of people not from here. Like, I guess where, how my mind jumped here is in general, I'd say, this is true, I guess, regardless of where the person lives, if you're buying an infant grave space, you've had enough on your mind. Not a good thing in the first place, but especially when we're looking to be kind on things and, or we're trying to do something, consider it with the cemetery. I think our, our goal of our obligations is to serve our local community and those that are tied to it. But there could come a day if cemeteries in Spokane are getting much more expensive, or Seattle even, or whatever else, that we could find people can, more consistently coming to us that have no Harrington ties whatsoever. And maybe we have no recourse in that, but it just maybe changes the way we look at this, because if this becomes a business that's no longer Harrington, Harrington people, Harrington stuff, we're gonna have to look at these spaces in a more cold way because who knows, a person could show up from Sacramento, California, want a place here. Who, I mean...
To answer your question...
Very cautious on your discriminatory practices.
There is, there is stuff, I don't know where it is, but explaining some of that, you can't buy them, an investor can't come in here and buy a whole, whole lot.
We talked about that.
Yeah, the R C W's code that. You can't buy it for four hundred and then turn around and sell it for eight hundred. That's against state law, so...
But for proprietary or community-oriented property, I don't know if it's legal to, I think this could address your question somewhat. If it's legal to be discriminant, um...
Discrimination's a good word.
Yeah. Discriminate, yeah. Not proprietary, but...
And that's fine, I guess, it's just, I'm saying is we consider rates to do with the cemetery, we might have to look at that from a broader perspective than the caring for Harrington people perspective that might tend to inform things.
Yeah. Cause, no, you're...
Changing the rates for residents versus non-residents.
Well, it doesn't sound, it's unlike, I think it's unlikely we can do such a thing.
Um...
That's probably about the only way you could do something is you could charge a rate, but if you're coming from this, if your residence is in these zip codes or this county, then you get a different...
If you're a native, ever been here with relative or ties to Harrington?
Well, yeah, there you go, what happens if the person...
Because also, when we talk about things like the endowment, right? It might legally be what it is, but I don't think that people are giving to the endowment, are intending to endow a cemetery that ends up getting filled up with people that had nothing to do with Harrington. Think the heart behind a lot of the care and the rates and the money that's donated is to care for the dead of our community. And it, it, there's no guarantees it's gonna stay that way.
Now, if you had a private, is there such a thing, a private cemetery?
It might not be a thing to solve here, I guess, but...
There is, my example, it was in Louisiana, but...
Well, the Catholic portion of the cemetery was private and then the city, they basically, I think, gave it to the city, but it was probably would have been the diocese owned it. And I guess the question is now, can, can a non-Catholic be buried in the Catholic section? Of all this?
Well, yeah, we can't, the city can't make such a discrimination by religious preference.
Okay.
So, maybe we could get a cemetery council at some point in time that can attack that issue.
Look at him not using the word cemetery for... Well, just maybe a quick question to our attorney, if you can even do that.
Yeah. But it sounds like, as far as this action item, the council wishes to take no action.
Okay. We are putting the finishing touches on kind of some of the things that we're going through. I was wondering one last time if the council has anything that they might want to see is, I hate to use, I'm not gonna use that word, something they would like to see built into the 2026 budget. So here's, here's my philosophy for next year. We have spent a lot of money doing good things. And that is not sustainable. So, I mean, we have bought the things that we need because they were available, they were a bargain, and although they were unexpected, but I don't think going out with what we have done in 2025, I don't think going out and, and increasing or improving or replacing more equipment should really be...
I think savings is the start.
So, what is important is taking care of our most valuable asset. So I'm going to propose, this is on the low end of the scale, but Cassie's been calling around to different areas and doing research online, what other municipal areas are doing in this area, and it's for, for cost of living adjustments. And they've ranged from two point seven up to astronomical amounts, so unless you guys are vehemently opposed to it, I think we gave three point two last year, I'm proposing two point eight this year.
Starting when?
For January. And then I've been speaking to them, Cassie, and Cassie's been speaking to public works, this is gonna be a year of, we're going to maintain, we're gonna manage. But I think 2026 with everything that's going on is probably not the year that we're going to openly try to do major upgrades.
Expenditures?
Well, for example, we had a section of, a couple of sections of sewer line that were in bad shape. And instead of just fixing the immediate local problem, they fixed, they upgraded everything from top to bottom. And that, I think in 2026 is something we need to curb, we just need to watch what we're spending very carefully and be purposeful on how we're spending money.
So to that end, and this may not be a real popular opinion, but I was one of the biggest advocates for getting our employees' salaries right size. But I think a COLA adjustment is appropriate to happen on a yearly basis. And I think they just had the adjustments of getting them where we can get them. So if there is a COLA for next year, I would request that it would start from a year from when we just did. I don't, I'm, with, in the light of everything you said about our financial position, I think we did it. I am very happy with what we were able to do for our employees, and I could go down the, the list of the four of them. I think we did well. I wish we could do more, but we have budget limitations. But to do that and then what, three months later or something, put the COLA on top of it?
I believe we did that in April.
No. We voted that through, yeah, it was, it was August or July, August. It was not all that long ago when we finally actually got that done. Creighton, you were, you were on council, yeah, so. I mean, there, hopefully, I mean, I'm not saying no to a yearly cost of living. I just say if nothing, if nothing else, it needs to be at a year in my book. Okay, so, so putting, if you're going to do a COLA, my two cents would be put it in July.
Me too. I agree with that.
All right.
You are?
That aside, any, I mean, that was my item that I really wanted to hit. And we're going to do other things. We're going to be a little more diligent about. They've got a pretty good inventory right now of stuff so they can respond quickly, but we might be cautious on if we can get away with three, we'll get away with three instead of buying four, stuff like that.
Yep.
Okay. Moving on. Additions to the agenda.
One quick thing, the executive session was listed as an action item. Do we need to take action coming out of the executive session? Or are you feeling like you can act on the sentiments that were expressed there?
I feel like I can act on the
Sentiment?
Sentiment that was expressed there.
Okay.
Because I don't see really that I'm acting on anything at this point.
Do you guys agree with that?
The guidance.
An action item and just...
The guidance.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, when we, when we give you the, the, go ahead to start a contract, that that carries through the lifecycle as far as expressing council's voted intent.
And I would agree with that.
So then I would think that if there's changes to that, we need to vote that way. If nothing else, to also make it clear that this is not Joe acting in ways that do not express the intent of the council.
Okay, so we will go backwards and revisit the executive session. Does, is there any action item that needs to be addressed?
I move that we request termination of the contract with M K B.
Do you have a second?
I'll do it. Second. There's some information on that, well.
So we are going to request the cancellation.
As per light of...
As was offered.
As, yes, as was, to make sure that's in there. It's not just us, I mean?
No.
Okay.
Offered and accepted.
Okay. We have a motion on the table to request the cancellation of the M K B contract as it was offered.
Immediate termination because within that email, there was a couple of options provided with termination, and I would say immediate termination.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Now we'll go through additions. Steven, you're up with copier machine.
Yeah, well, this actually has a budget implication, so it's more than just a F Y I. I have finally completed getting this copy machine mostly ready for our use. The first time I tried to do this, I came in here on a Sunday and I found the basement flooding and then everything got waylaid. And it was quite a pain because there was a series of problems with trying to get the old administrative codes off of it, which I did not have and nearly could not do. And then I needed to get a firmware update, which nobody would give me, and I had to beg the manufacturer to send me something that normally is only reserved for technicians and is a part of why they get to keep their licenses. As one in Court of Lane told me, if I, my likelihood of giving you that is the same as if you called up Microsoft and asked for the source code of Windows. Didn't even let me finish the question before you said no. So anyways, I got a little bit more configuration to do and got to clean it. As you noted, I got to clean the scanning bed, but I think it's good to go. I've ran all the diagnostics. I could run on it. All of this is going to be pertinent, by the way, because we currently have a, what, a little bit under $200, we need to count base and usage with Rico for the one over there. And we should be able to eliminate that. Not a huge savings, but a couple hundred dollars a month is, is a nice little gain. That copier came from North Town Insurance, as a lot of computer hardware in this place has. Thank you, North Town Insurance, for all your generosity. It, that machine is considered a workhorse. The nice thing is, is that like, that machine, when I've looked it up, is designed for a quick changes of parts and a lot of maintenance. I understand why people who have it under contract would love to have that machine over there. This one is designed to go 300,000 pages before its first servicing. It's designed to have a total life of a million pages, and we are at 90,000 right now, so it is pretty low mileage. It's passing all of its tests. And it prints a third faster than the other one, and it scans twice as fast as the other one, even though it is about 10 years old now. So, I think, you know, who knows, we could, we could get rid of the Rico contract and it could die the next day, but I've tried to do all the due diligence we can, but it looks like a great find. It seems to be functional and I think, to the point of what I said earlier, I think we should have on our next meeting, an action item to give the mission, mayor permission to break that contract at the next available opportunity. And so then that'll give us another month worth of testing it. Hope, I think we'll print, when is the next chamber mailer go out? Is that in December it goes out?
It just went out.
Just went out.
It just went out.
Well...
But we'll get our 260 water bills and...
Yeah, so we'll put it through its paces and then hopefully by the time we're voting on this in the next meeting, we should have a bit of experience with it and we can pull the trigger on it, so. That was that.
Okay. Uh, David, pot this.
Okay, just, I know that's a nasty word, but one of my pet peeves, right out in front of City Hall here on Third Street, there's a, one developing.
In the street?
In the, in the travel lane and probably should do something with that. I don't know if it's our responsibility or the state's.
That's D O T. So I can contact the state.
Right.
There's another one on that, clear up, almost at the other end of town.
Yes, opposite lane.
Third Street.
Yep, in the southbound lane.
And one that I know is ours, we still haven't fixed the one by Tony Hamilton's place.
That's a cutout, yes. There's that one there, and then when you come off of Highway 28 and you turn on Main Street here at the bridge down here, there's one that'll get you to, and that's one of those.
Is it on the bridge deck? Because a lot of those transitions were cleaned up when we had...
This is well before it.
Okay.
So, there's some cold patch or something in it. The reason why, if we don't take care of them now, the freezing thawing going into winter, they're just going to become craters later, bigger craters.
Yeah, okay. We will make orders to have them look at those ones and then have the D O T contact them to have them get those, at least we'll tell them they're, they're growing, so.
Yeah, and when you hit them, I
Okay.
Don't like them. I don't think anybody enjoys that.
Update on the shed. Do you want me to comment on it?
Yeah, you comment on it.
Okay, so I have, I started writing the letter and then I kind of stopped and I had some questions, so I was going back, so I should have that letter out to them into next week at the absolute latest. Biggest thing is I wanted to get the measurements exactly. Finding the documents in our codes that say what establishes the right of way is not an easy find, so.
There should be a set, the setback stuff should cover that though, too.
And that's why I had the guys go out and measure from the center line to the, to the side of the building, so I've got those measurements now, so I can come up with a very clear point A, point B, point C.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it's obvious.
Yeah, it's almost on top of the street sign.
You can't see the street sign.
Oh, you know what?
Okay, so that's, that's my plan on that.
Okay.
And as long as we'll get into that, I, I mentioned it at a, another in-person, not a meeting, but the fire hydrants around town being blocked. North in town. Now, I don't know whose responsibility or what jurisdiction, fire department?
I think that's a, a state law that sheriff's office could enforce.
And that's on, on the north end also.
Because the fire district doesn't have any enforcement capability, as far as I know.
Okay.
I would think the sheriff's office could.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I don't think that's a Harrington code. I think that's, that falls on the sheriff's department. Okay.
Well, they'll be able to tell us one way or another.
Okay, uh, let's move on to approving the consent agenda minus
Check register.
Check register.
So moved. Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Nope, good.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, and addressing the check register, David?
There's just a couple items. I've, uh, transaction eight seventy-two, eight seventy-three, and eight seventy-four.
I've went through... Quarterly payments.
Two, okay, I don't, I went through, I kept everything logged, the old past meetings. And the long-term care, I don't see that showing up on anything anywhere prior.
I made those notes this time for my, my records, so they may have, they may have looked like, like the numbers of the pay periods of the quarters, but I needed, I needed to separate because of the payments are being made to the same entity. I needed to keep them separate for myself to know, like, which payment goes to which fund.
Okay.
So that might be why it, um, it confusing because I changed it this time.
Okay. And the P F M L, what's that, family?
It's the Paid Family Leave Act.
Okay, okay, well, I forgot the A, but...
But yeah, that's what they call it now, P F M L.
Is that somebody using it or is that just?
It's a, it's an insurance that we, we pay for quarterly.
Okay, because again, I wasn't seeing these on prior quarterlies or anything.
I didn't make those notes previously to know. I did that to eliminate my confusion.
Okay, so it's nothing new, it's just a different, okay, all right.
Isn't that, that has to do with the accounting and the bars codes and that kind of stuff in this, our system?
Um, well, yes, of course, but also because it's all being paid to the Employment Security Department, it was just easier for me to make those notations in the memo line so that I can easily spot which account those quarterly payments are going to much more quickly.
Well, to expound upon that is eight seventy-three and eight seventy-four, they're both P F M L.
So one, one is the, like, the, one of them is like an insurance.
Unemployment, it says.
And one of them is like the, our portion that's due of, like, the portion of, I don't know if it's hours worked or money paid by employees.
So we've always had unemployment insurance, and then when did the P M F L A show up? What was that? Eight, nine years ago?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure, but I do...
Three or four.
Yeah, it was, maybe three or four, okay. And it's a, it's a new state mandated disability program so they could fund the people that needed to take a, a leave for family reasons, maternity reasons.
We always had F M L A.
It's the same thing.
It's the same thing.
But then the state got involved with that, I mean, okay, well, I was just wondering what the difference, one's 128 and some change, and the other one's 436 and some change.
Right, and that's not, that's not 100% city funds either. Some of that is, was taken out of the employee's paychecks as well. So that, that reflects both the employee and the employer portions that's paid to that, to us. And I do have every payroll quarterly report that I get, I do upload those to the shared drive for, so you guys can review those anytime.
And isn't Leftful, Otis and Warwick doing some of that?
They do that, yes, and this is the reflection of their submissions.
Right, okay, yeah, that's what I thought.
Speaking of that, how, is it because we had another meeting in October that we don't, there's not a check to them this month? So it must have been paid before the 22nd.
It could have been, yep, but I could have gotten an invoice later, which I'll pay later and put on the next week's claims.
Okay.
Okay, thanks for...
Okay. Any other comments at a turn on the check register?
I move we accept the check register.
All right.
Second.
No further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Mears comments, library keys. Um, there's been a request for us to give light keys to the library to the library board members. And I'm inclined to do so unless anybody has vehement disagreements to it. I will just ask that they have a clear accountability for the keys that they have, so. I mean, it's just an operation of the city, so unless somebody is vehemently opposed, I will make sure that happens.
I think it's appropriate with them taking more responsibility for the space. The only thing I would ask is that I think we need to do one last review of that space to get the rest of our stuff out. I think there could be things in the basement, there could be things in the back room that are still ours, maybe some of them that need to go trash, but I don't want them to have to trash. Because the problem is that we have is, we end up looking at things and we're like, well, I don't know, maybe that's yours. And they go, I don't know, maybe that's yours. And then the things just stay there forever, so we need to have a little work session with them to actually make sure that when they get, basically, if it's in that building, it's yours.
I would say that for the most part, to expedite things, and I know we've got the hardware laying around, I will put a locking handle on that one closet where a lot of city records are sitting, because I'm still finding that to be a valuable resource for some information.
But I think we should move those here.
We should.
Even the basements that flood?
Uh, we've got shelves.
We can, we can put them on the, the top parts of the shelves. If it gets to the top parts of the shelves, we're going to have bigger problems to, to work with.
Throwing water, so.
The only other question I have is about the keys. Who's going to police that or monitor that? I mean, when they, they have a rollover of members or board members.
I would say that we only give them five, they have five board members, we give them five keys. It's going to be their responsibility to pass them first to person.
Board right now has a key, so it would be one for each of the other ones.
Yeah.
It goes along the lines of the library is managing itself quite well, and I think we should all continue to allow that to happen.
Where some of this is coming from is they've now started to spin up committees, so that this is a reflection of additional involvement, but they don't always have a place to meet, or they've got volunteers that would like to contribute time, but they don't always have good ways to get people in there. Or they've got volunteers that would like to contribute time, but they don't always have good ways to get people in there. So these keys are going to give them the access to do even more without additional funding.
Do we, do we have a policy or should we, or can we have an op, do we have an obligation to have a policy of them loan an amount to other people like yours?
I don't think, well, yeah, we, I'm not saying we shouldn't.
Our scope or is it up to them?
I think it's up to them.
It's up to them.
Okay.
Cause it is the library.
But I think we can say that we can express our dissatisfaction with the thought of these being given to.
Because pretty soon it's like, everything gets loaned out and, you know, what, you're, you're in there and pretty soon they have a pizza party again there, well, whatever they're doing. You could, I can just see it, not say it'll happen, but it has the potential for uh, getting out of hand, maybe.
We give it and we can take it away.
Yeah.
Re-ke.
That's right. All I gotta do is change locks, then you have some mad guy coming over here demanding in.
So that was my, the other item on one direction now is unfortunately I don't have an update. But the process of syncing the new pump into well number three started today.
Oh, did?
Yes.
Awesome.
They were out Monday to do the final recandoring about where things were at, electrical systems, what have you. He was out with the electrician. He would have been here yesterday, but it being a holiday, he waved off and did it today. So I don't know what progress they made. Let me just see if I happened to get a text.
There was guys around there all day long. I really wanted to stop.
I did miss the phone call from Chance at the end of the workday though.
Oh, well, I know I didn't get an update. Hitting send is a crucial part of getting response. I do that all the time. Okay. So that's why I don't have a total response for where we're at. But if he holds true to what he made the comment, when we got this scheduled, it's pretty much, once he starts, this is his project until it's done.
Timeline?
I got the impression it would be done this week.
Okay. And that's the electrical and controller and all of it, okay.
The, the biggest delay is probably just letting the process of sanitation of the, of the.
Yeah, they gotta bake them.
Cause it has to soak in the sanitizer.
And then we're going to have to test it, right?
Yeah, they're going to test it. They're basically going to discharge it into the creek, which is where the overflow goes right now. So they'll, they'll run that for quite a while just to make sure it's not going to hiccup. But hypothetically, this time next week, we could be pulling water out of well number one to feed the city. It's going to take a little bit of playing around to make sure, you know, with the controller that we don't overpressure the pipes. It seems like 83 pounds is our magical point where we have plenty of water and we're not blowing up the water lines.
Right, yeah.
Uh, and that's, that's really what I've got. I mean, all the other stuff that I've talked to about, I've tried to communicate the other stuff that's happening in the city. So that's about where we're at. We can bring everything else up. Questions and comments from our public?
Uh, about the cemetery thing, the investment policy that he was looking to explore for your discriminating on, on who may or may not enter. Investment policy may be the route that you take to outline that everything. Because if, if it's an investment policy that outlines for the citizens of Harrington, um, it might give more authority than something else. Cause the downwinds for that. Something for them to explore too. The keys, at the Chamber of Commerce, we have a key roster, so we have the names assigned to it. And then they, the person that has their key assigned may select one other person. So that it's always, it's a chain of custody, but it's also, hey, if you hand this key to somebody, you're responsible for what they did. And so having a key roster formed up.
And the keys are numbered.
Yeah, we stamp the numbers in them.
That's good.
Had that for the hall. They're wearing numbered keys for the hall.
How well did that work?
Worked great until they changed the locks.
And I think a lot of our doors may not support it, but I've said before, I'd like to look into, like the fire hall has a push button lock.
A slider lock?
And I haven't looked into exactly how secure those are, but the concept of having a keyless lock, not talking digital necessarily, although those are sometimes an option, but a keyless lock would help us, I think, in a lot of places. And we could change that. I mean, you could have a go over and change that code, you know, whenever.
Today's technology, I can.
Right, exactly. You get multiple codes and you can know someone got in, who put in the code, and we could hit, trace things back. But these doors are not, these, these glass doors are kind of different. And I don't, I get, I'm assuming we won't have the same kind of options. Cause they're not even dead bolts, they're the sliding stuff, so I don't, I don't know, but.
Key fob like up at the schools, I mean, they always know who's in. There is a record up there, but that's got to be something expensive.
Yeah, that's really, yeah.
I know Sprague's Fire Department has a key bed and it, every member has their own key code. And it triggers a monitor who's.
Okay.
A rolling record that you got there at that time.
But Sprague's Fire Department is something else compared to most little rural fire departments.
You say fire department or school? Fire, I'm thinking of fire.
Okay. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, first and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at 2:56, 2:56.